Five o'clock PM, roll call please.
Trustee Botner?
Here.
Trustee Burson?
Here.
Trustee McElvee is absent. Trustee Mallett?
Present.
Trustee Muncy is absent. Trustee Williams?
Yes.
President Wunicki?
Present. Please rise for the pledge and Mr. Mallett, would you lead the pledge?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
All right, we'll move on to number three, public comments, and our clerk Tracy will call your name and you can come up to the podium if you signed up to speak.
Chris Ruback?
My name is Chris Ruback. I was recently elected to serve as the president of the Norton Lake HOA. I'm here tonight on behalf of the people living in 106 homes just minutes away from the board meeting. My wife and I built our home in Norton Lake in 2017 with K-Havania Home, the fifth house in the community and the last one K-Homes built before they decided to leave the development. Shortly after Shodin Homes came in to finish the community, it has been a sole builder for the past eight years. Throughout all this time, the original developer of its property had remained Hudson T. Harrison, or Hank as he's known. Once a required percentage of homes were sold, Shodin transferred the HOA control to the Norton Lake HOA Transition Board in 2024. As of March, much of 2024, it was assigned to Shodin and Hanks to contain simple documents and information, all of which are usually standard protocols during a transfer of controls. As a property management firm, E.T. has noticed countless times, there's never seen such a dysfunctional transition from a builder to a community than all others, and they manage hundreds of communities in the world. When information was lost, Shodin continually pointed to Hank and Hank continued to point to Shodin. Fast forward to today and why I stand here tonight. On January 7th of this year, the transition board was replaced with a new board of directors of three people. The new board had worked hard to catch up on all the information and in doing so observed the continuous dysfunction within Norton Lake with our very own assets. Being a structural engineer by trade, I suggested we walk the community and prepare a punch list of items that the HOA and the revenue to Norton Lake will have to complete. We compiled a 19-page document that outlined the various levels of inequity business, including both dangerous and broken items that plagued our community in a single six years old. This punch list was forwarded by our lawyers from Kovic, Shepherd, and Nevis to Shodin and Hanks, as well as Mark Rooney and Barbara Wunicki.
Good.
And in book there too bad.
Perfect.
From the village on February 14th of this year. A response from Shodin and Hanks was requested by the 25th of February, however, it was yet to hear it. Ask anyone in Norton Lake who has committed a concern in the past, and they will tell you, shodin ignorance and complete avoidance has been the theme for both groups over the years. The crux of the punch list that we submitted is simple. The HOA does not feel Shodin and Hanks have completed the community to the proper level of care expected from a brand-new development. The HOA should not be responsible to repair and finish incomplete aspects of the development that the builder and developers were responsible for. Example, we have a half-mile of light path that has extensive trackings throughout, some of which are over two inches wide and four inches deep. We have an irrigation system that runs from a pond to the left entrance, which doesn't even work because we have over 300 feet of clogged supply line because of ponds, the setup wasn't proper at the pond. We have an entire four-and-a-half acres south of the homes on Lees and May outside Drive, which is designed to be a prairie for wildflowers and native grasses for the master plan, which is signed off by the village and everybody else at the development. After walking the area with a prairie expert in January, he indicated it was nothing like a tripping. The entire area has never been planted, tilled, or improved from where it was 10 years ago before Norton Lake Development was even started, when it was Norton Lake Park, right? Much of the phase-three open areas also remain untrued and are just much-didst holy, even though a master plan is offered here. And again, we understand that it's been winter, they've come in out of it, hopefully things start picking up, however, they had a lot of nice months last year and it just has left us more. There are countless other items such as cracked sidewalks, broken streetlights, as well as massive holes, ground cracks, and uneven terrain around our ten-acre lake, which is related to break angles, tear ACLs, and generate loss. There are surely other problems that we don't even know about. The current conditions of the HOA maintained areas within Norton Lake are closed behind a house that looks finished on the outside, yet as soon as you walk through that front door, you can see studs and lives. If the issues were just mi- a few minor things, it would be different, but based on our punch list that we generated and getting actual quotes from professional companies, based off of some of the main areas like the prairie repair, the light path, and irrigation, it was somewhere between $100 and $200,000 now to fix a six-year-old development. When Shodin turned over the HOA control of the transition board in 2024, there were given only $2,000. Based on an audit that our accountants performed, we should have received around $12,000. This missing $10,000 looks to have been spent during the final year of E.T.'s oversight on management. Our accountant noted that the management fees during this time were nearly three times the cost of any of the previous five years, yet nothing was extra resumbed on behalf of the revenue. The HOA is going to work with everyone involved to resolve the issues, and if we are given the funds we need, we are even willing to oversee all aspects of the issues since. The new board has already taken upon ourselves that there is still to work, the landscape contracts, pond contracts, getting bids, contacting people, we can do all of it. I think all the parties involved with Norton Lake are hoping that we can just move on to the next part, and that includes the HOA and the village. There is talk of Shodin looking at a new development opportunity within Hampton Hills. I don't see how this board could ever allow anything like that proceed, given their last development is not even complete. I would hope that the village board will ensure that approval of any new Shodin developments within Hampton Hills, or anything associated with Hank Harrison as well, would be contingent on the success- on the successful completion of Norton Lake, to the S.A.S. staff and other agents. If not, then another eight to 10 years, that future community's HOA president is standing before you tonight, asking for the same support that I seek. In closing, the Norton Lake HOA and 106 homes in reference, hope that Shodin and Hanks will address our concerns in time they may. Both parties have the means to ensure that the community is finished properly, so it can reach its full potential and remain a desirable place to live. Thanks for listening and if you have any questions, feel free to ask.
Marion Rock? Koch?
My name is Marion Cook. I live on Hampton Hills, basically Hampton Hills and Anderson. I'm just calling or asking about the industrial barn that has been built next to my home. I have heard that the land will be rezoned to some farm. I'm wondering what that's going to do, not only to my home, but to the neighborhood. There's been a portable toilet in front of this unit since they started the project in July of '23, which I understand they have two years before that can- before that has to be removed. And if this is rezoned, does this mean that this portable toilet is going to have to be looked at during the rezoning? I'm concerned about what this is going to do to my property and my neighbors around me.
No others?
No others? Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to the consent agenda, does anything need to be removed from the consent agenda? Hearing, none, seeing none. Motion to move the consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by trustee Burson, second by trustee Wilson. Roll call?
Williams?
Williams, I'm sorry, Williams.
Trustee Burson?
Hi.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Botner?
Yes.
Trustee Mallett?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Moving on to staff reports, we have our police report with Chief James Levand.
Thank you. A few items, I'll try to make this quick for you. But on Tuesday, February 25th, we received a report of a missing elderly subject from Madison, Wisconsin. The elderly subject, he had dementia, his family placed a air tag on his car in case something like this would ever happen. The air tag pinged to Virgil Township out by County Line Road and 64, but unfortunately, air tags don't continuously update, so that was the last known location. So officers went out looking for him. We used a flock camera that's on 64, which this was the reason we installed a flock camera. Missing people, more high-profile cases, not for traffic-related. So Officer Cusick and Stavi end up locating the gentleman at the Circle K gas station. They were able to secure his vehicle, they brought him back here to the station. His family was notified on the phone, they advised they were three hours away. Both his children lived in California, and another family member was coming from Madison. So they brought him here, they kept him company, gave him food and water while he was in the kitchen, they realized something was wrong with his demeanor. They called Fox River Fire Department, they came, did his vitals, blood sugar, blood sugar was dangerously low. They transported him to Delnor Hospital, got his treatment, he was doing great. Family member came about three hours later, she was visibly upset, she didn't know the area. Stavi took her from here, took her to the vehicle, made sure she got her vehicle, escorted her to Delnor Hospital, and reunited her with the family member. Happy to say, I've heard from the family about five different times in the last week, they are very thankful. So I wanted to recognize, obviously, Officer Cusick and Stavi for the work they did, they went above and beyond. I also wanted to mention the importance of what the flock camera can do for us in situations like this. So Officer Cusick is going to be recognized the next board meeting for February Officer of the Month. Stavi had it last month, so this one's going to go to Officer Cusick. But they did a great job, and the family is extremely thankful for it, and he was reunited with his family, so that was a good outcome. We purchased a new secure payment box. Residents kept saying, why do you guys not have a 24-hour box when you're closed that we can drop off payments, citations? Hampton Township Highway Department came out this week, installed on the front of the building, just waiting for a sign that's going to go over it. It's under video surveillance out there 24/7, so at least now residents can drop off payments and that in a secure location, and not have to wait until we're open during regular business hours. So we've-
Chief?
Yes.
If you would, the-
Checks.
Checks, not cash, please. You can do cash, but we don't recommend it.
We highly discourage it, but it does occasionally happen, so we've gone away from the cash process a long time ago. So we discourage that, and I would hope that most people in general, even though that's a secure box under a video, would not be putting cash into it. But we put that out there, so hopefully it is checks, certified checks, or wait to business hours. But even during business hours, we've gone away from the cash lane, we don't like the cash, so. All right, well, we also have spent a lot of time in the grant process recently, as everyone knows. Actually, the information was forwarded to me from trustee Muncy. I didn't know it existed, and I also didn't know if we already had someone enrolled, but IML has a Grant Finder tool, and you're allowed one person from every municipality to register, you set your parameters, it's not just police department, roadways, everything. It continuously sends you alerts every time it comes out. Christina registered for it, we did not have anyone registered for it, we never actually have. So now she gets the alerts for any grants that's available out there, could be roads, village, police, it doesn't matter, we'll get the alerts on it. So that was a nice tool to be able to get registered for. Real quick, the Illinois General Assembly is moving to try to pass Bill SB 0042. It's actually gone pretty quick through the process, and it's going to get passed, we're pretty certain, even though law enforcement is absolutely against this. And just to break it down quickly, what it is, it's saying currently, if you are 21 or older, you can possess cannabis in the state. If you have it in a vehicle, it has to be in an odor-proof container. Well, they're going to try to strip that way from law enforcement, so law enforcement can now not use the odor of cannabis being burnt or raw to do a traffic stop, investigate a traffic stop on that, law enforcement's against it for obvious reasons. Reason we're against it is if I walk up to a vehicle and I smell alcohol, it tells me you're probably under the influence of alcohol, we can investigate it, we can take a dangerous DUI driver off the road. Well, this, of course, like everything else in the state of Illinois, is limiting our hands, because we're going to be tied now, we're not going to be able to use it, if we do, the courts are going to throw it out. Hasn't passed yet, it's going to pass, I'm pretty confident of it, and this just shows you sort of where everything goes when it comes to law enforcement, and this is just going to be another one. This isn't talking about responsible adults, this isn't talking about legal consumption, this is talking about people that are out there driving on the roadways high, which is just as dangerous as alcohol, and they're going to end up killing someone out there. And unfortunately, law enforcement is going to be extremely limited in our ability to investigate that and stop it. One more quick thing, Too Good for Drugs just wrapped up this week. It's a 17-week program at Bel Graham and Wasco School. This week, I'm doing the K-9 presentation at the school for all the 5th graders with Coda. We've visited all the classes, I got a couple more this week. Monday will be Bel Graham's graduation in the morning, Tuesday will be Wasco's Too Good for Drugs graduation. Program's amazing, I know it says Too Good for Drugs, it's way more than that. I mean, it's about self-esteem, it's how you treat people, I mean, it goes on and on, the kids love it, the school loves it, the parents love it, we love it as a police department. Want to thank Officer Harvey, Officer Hat, and Officer Bond, who's been doing it this year. Previous year's I did it, I just don't have the time to do it anymore, so they did a great job. But there's just another example, as I know we speak of budgets and everything else, that the police department that is staffed at minimum levels does the same exact services that large agencies, example, St. Charles, who have SROs. We have officers in both schools all week long, even if it isn't for Too Good for Drugs, that is done with our manpower that we have. So I just want to highlight the services that the police department does offer to the community, just besides your basic law enforcement. And I think that's it for-
School resource officer for the laypeople.
Yes, lady.
All right, any questions or comments on Chief's report? All right. Thank you, Chief Levand. All right, next we have Finance Department, we have Timothy McPhillips, our treasurer, and for the fiscal year 2025 budget status update.
Okay, good evening to everybody. For the public, I'd just like to inform you that we have two months left in our fiscal year, our fiscal year ends on April 30th, and we are preparing our budget for fiscal year '26, which will run from May 1st of 2025 till April 30th of 2026. I provided the board some slides on the three primary drivers of our budget. Those include a development of the manpower hours, overall revenue figures, and our capital plan going forward for fiscal year '26. I provided you some exhibits, when it comes to manpower, Exhibit 1, I basically built out the assumptions I provided in that email that was going to develop the mandatory hours, I'm sorry, the required hours we're going to put into the budget for full-time officers. I'm not going to go through all the detail of how I come up with the final number, but the final number is $1,366,334. I compare that on the next exhibit, Exhibit 2, to previous years. You can see from the fiscal year '25 estimate until fiscal year '26 budget, we have an increase of 11%, 11.6%. That doesn't exactly tie to what the COLA increases are in the assumptions, and the reason that is, is because we also have some officers that will be getting step increases. So some officers will, very common in a municipality, that you'll get a step increase and then a COLA increase. So if you're wondering why that 11.6% doesn't tie out exactly to the assumptions built in, that's one of the reasons why. Moving on to Exhibit 3, moving on to revenues. Exhibit 3, I basically just gave you a historical perspective of all the revenues that the village receives and the percent changes year over year. I'm not going to go into any detail on that unless you have a question, and I'm more than happy to answer questions if you were to call me or send me an email. Exhibit 4 is just there, it's probably really didn't need to be there, it's just kind of a narrowed version of Exhibit 3. But Exhibit 5, I think is probably the most critical one. It doesn't say much, but really what that elaborates on is a majority of your revenue. And, I mean, when I talked to village administrator Rooney about our revenue, and it really, the village has no control over its destiny when it comes to revenue. All of this revenue comes from the state, it's driven by the population, and they determine the driver that is eventually going to trickle down into our village. So of that $3.167 million that we're going to budget, that is strictly coming from the estimate for the Illinois Municipal League. We have no control over that, and it's a majority of our revenue. Compared to our fiscal year '25 budget of $4.4 million, 70% of our revenue comes from this revenue passed through by the state. If you also include the road and bridge revenue from the county, that's another 16%. You're looking at about 86% of our revenue we have no control over. So I just think it's important that the trustees are aware of that.
And then for the public, Tim, it's important to know, the police fines and building permits, revenues, again, that's depends on factors outside any direct control of the village. And Norton Lake being closed out, those building department fees that were elevated the last 18 months will be now zero.
Yes.
So that's a significant hit in one of that percentage of revenues.
Yeah, that's a very good point. You may wonder on that Exhibit 5, why I included that building permits in there. That is, that is something we can control, but as Administrator Rooney had just noted, that's going to be closing out because, you know, the construction is almost complete. Exhibit 6 was requested as a possibility of what the implications would be if the food and beverage tax was increased. So the state imposes, I believe it's a 6.25% sales tax across the entire state, and then home rural municipalities can increase that. We get 1% of that 6.25%, and that's what this schedule reflects. So the biggest, and the Illinois Department of Revenue breaks down the various groupings of the tax, 1 through 10, you know, general merchandise, all the way through to manufacturing. The two big ones are food and drinking and eating places. So hypothetically, if we increase the proposed tax for food and beverage only, that would bring in approximately $92,000 for the year, that's if it went up a half a percent. If we increased it a full 1%, which is what we're getting now, it would be approximately $185,000. And then finally, Exhibit 7 is our capital improvement plan, not called planner, capital improvement needs. Two items generally are capital improvement, every year, traditionally, the village has bought a new squad car for good reason, we cover a big area. A lot of mileage get put on those squad cars. The other big item is reflected in this schedule. Last year, or maybe it was a year and a half ago, we had our civil engineers, H.R. Green, contract out with a, another contractor, robotics, I believe it is, correct? And the inventory was, we have about 94.5 miles of roads we're responsible for. They put those in one of five classifications, as you can see here, red being the worst condition, and dark green being very good condition. Expanding that out over 20 years and just kind of evenly repairing those based on a $450,000 per lane mile usage, these are all just rough estimates. You're looking at about a $42 million capital budget required over the next 20 years. I'm not a civil engineer, Scott can speak to that better than I can, but I just kind of want to put that in our framework for you to think through as we prepare for this budget. That's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Well, and just for the public, and the trustees know it, we budget annually just shy of a million dollars in improvements. So 20 years, we would do 20 million, but the need is 42. So we have a shortfall of 20-plus million dollars at the end of 20 years. So it's just stating the obvious that we're going to have to do something to get other revenues to address these road issues. So, and we'll discuss that further in length at the budget hearings and the public works, subcommittee meetings. And I think Scott, on a couple items later in the agenda, will probably touch on some of that.
Thank you, Mark. Go ahead, Mike.
Did not get the email.
You did not?
I did not.
I'm so sorry. Everyone else get it?
I did.
You did? Okay. Mike, I'm so sorry.
3:11 yesterday, that's what it said, so I didn't get it, I just checked.
Oh, I, my sincerest apologies.
No, that's right, that's right, it's like, buttoned to my phone, like, for real, but we got time, so just, yeah, thank you.
All right, any comments or questions for Tim, anything?
I know Mike doesn't have any.
All right, thank you, Tim.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving along, we're at six action items. A motion to approve Resolution 25-02 to enter into an intergovernmental agreement between the village and the Hampton Township Highway District to share responsibilities and share funding expenses of the 20, 25 KCOM STP projects.
So moved.
Okay, moved by trustee Mallett, second by trustee Burson. Any discussion? Any questions? All right, trustee Burson or no?
I just, and for anybody who wasn't paying attention, wasn't here in prior meetings, we're required to enter this intergovernmental agreement, as I understand it, as a grant recipient, right? So I just wanted to make sure that that was clear.
Yeah, anytime that it's not just one entity with the state, they'll want to prove that, and they'll want to know how the sub-applicant or the co-applicants, they want to know how they're splitting it.
Yeah, this is the reverse of Anderson Road a few years ago, where Hampton Township Highway Department was the lead agency, and we agreed to reimburse them. This time, they're reimbursing us as the lead agency, just because we're going to have more of the lane miles as village roads, not township.
Okay, roll call, please.
Trustee Mallett?
Aye.
Trustee Burson?
Aye.
Trustee Botner?
Aye.
Trustee Williams?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Action item B, motion to approve Resolution 25-06 authorizing an application for Kane County Grand Victoria Riverboat Funds and execution of all necessary documents, and I think Chief will speak on that item.
Motion first.
I'll accept a motion.
So moved.
Motion to move. Trustee Burson's, trustee Williams, second.
Botner?
Yeah. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. So yeah, this is no funds to the village, this is obviously if we got the grant, it's 100% funded grant. What it's asking for, Christina's been working on it, it's actually due tomorrow. So a lot of people have helped in this, way smarter than I, because I am not an IT person. So Kim has been a big part, Helping Hands has been a big part. All it's actually asking us for, we've given them a amount, and I don't have the exact number in front of me, but say it's in the $40,000 range. What we're asking for is, everyone knows we've had to upgrade servers, everything's been outdated. So we've taken those receipts for all the work that's been done so far, and a little bit more that's coming up, and asking them to reimburse us. Will we get it? We don't know. We have had bad luck in the past with this grant. But we're asking for a minimal amount compared to what others are getting, $200,000. So we'll submit it and how it goes, but again, this is just them saying, if we approve it, you must give us the receipts for the work that you've already done and paid for.
Okay, any questions or comments?
I do.
Oh, I'm sorry, Nick, go ahead.
I was just going to comment on this grant generally, so this has been around since '97. They've been offering this, and they've given like $170 million away here locally. Last year, they gave away a little over a million, this year, they're giving away like 5 million. So this is one of those grants that should be looked at every single year. You know, if we start, I mean, if this gains traction and we start, you know, being more successful at grant applications and our volume go up, we need, there should be some mechanism in place to track these. And if it's not for us, it's for the next folks sitting here, so that they know. I don't know what that is, but really important, especially something like this, it's local, there's a lot of money to be given away every year.
And we'll talk about it in the budget formula- And we'll talk about it in the budget formulation and different projects that are capital needs that might be worthy of this specific grant. And we'll talk about it at the budget and try to focus it, whether it be a, you know, squad car, or some road ditch line repair, turn lane on, you know, one of the roads. I think we've got one we're looking at with the state on some turn lanes that have not been put in on. Scott, which road was it?
Brown Road and...
Oh, Brown and sixty-four.
Route sixty-four.
And sixty-four.
Sixty-four at Brown.
Then one east of us, too. One by...
So they're not big amounts, but it'd help us if we had some grant money to move those projects with IDOT forward. And we're working with the state senators, asking for his ability to help us on different projects. We just sent something in to him today on those, like, three items.
Okay, I think Chief Levand was next. And then, go ahead.
I was just gonna briefly touch on what Trustee Botner said. So like, every grant, like Christina, who plays a big part in this, does, like, this is like being filed away. We aren't filling these grants, and like, and the paperwork's gone. So she has a whole system set up that it's gonna be there. So even if we aren't successful on a grant, you know, again, a big thing with grants is, you have the ability to reach out to these committees and say, hey, why did you deny me? And they'll respond. And they'll say, these were great points, this was not a good point. So at least we know next time around, okay, we see where the error was on it, let's correct this. So there'll be like a track record and a history of everything there. So even if it's whoever comes in in the future, at least that will be there for them, too.
Good. Go ahead, Trustee Burson.
I was just gonna touch on that in a different way. I think that applying for some of these grants, like this technology grant that is potentially available from the casino, is not an event, it's a discipline, right? And so it's not something that we're doing right now today. It's something that we're, that we, that I think we're finally gearing up to do on an ongoing basis. And when we do it next year, it's gonna be easier than it was this year. And I think it will continue, you know, to get easier as you go, as the, as we get into the rhythm of this. I think that's important.
Okay, any, oh, go ahead, Nick.
One more quick comment. And I guess kind of what I'm getting at, you know, my personal experience is, is setting reminders and calendars. You know, I mean, Chief, I know you're not doing this at the last minute, but it's due tomorrow, and I'm sure you would have appreciated having a bunch more time to work on this, maybe, I don't know. But having some sort of a reminder, if there's a village calendar that circulates the office, it's always there, having a grant, having this as part of the system. Because I would hate to have this overlooked. I think that if we're not here, it could easy, we've been overlooking it since the village's inception, and it's been here the entire time. So, you know, as we find these gems, we need to make sure that we don't forget about them.
Go ahead, Chief.
So it's a good point, but I think that's where this IML Grant Finder is going to come in. I mean, it's setting the reminder for us. And like, on this riverboat, actually, I credited Scott for this, because he was the one that brought it to my attention. As soon as this came up and was available, we started working on this. So even though the deadline is tomorrow, we've, let me clarify that, because that's, Christina has been working on this very hard. So like, we've been working on it a while. The only reason you're hearing it now, you know, is we, over the last month or two months, we've started discussing the grants and, you know, having policies and everything. So this was already in place before, but I think this Grant Finder tool is gonna be like our reminder. And it'd be easy for Christina even to send to the board, you know, it's like, hey, this is a grant that's out there. Do you have interest in pursuing this grant? It may not be PD-related, but it could benefit the village. So I think that tool will be a big benefit, too.
Okay, Clerk Johnson would like to say a few words. Go ahead.
Just to your point, Nick, when I worked here from twenty fifteen to twenty nineteen, we were applying for this riverboat grant. And we were getting declined. So it has been in the past, this grant has been applied for over numerous years. We've just never been able to get it. So hopefully now, thumbs up, we get it this time.
Now we're on the list.
Yes.
All right. Any other discussion? We'll do roll call.
Trustee Burson?
Aye.
Trustee Botner?
Aye.
Trustee Mallett?
Aye.
Trustee Williams?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. We'll go on to seven discussion items. A, village acceptance of public road improvements in Norton Lake subdivision. And that would, we would do that at our next meeting, which would be March eighteenth. So any discussion on that? Mark?
Ray, I know you've been leading the effort of basically, the public improvements we're talking about, get to the mic and add to it, Ray, but it's curb to curb is the public improvements. And I think a total of, what is it, Chief? Four streetlights in the subdivision? Some, very small. So the punch list that the HOA has, do not qualify for us to tap the developers' letter of credit bond money for those said public improvements. I know that Attorney Forte has spoken with the HOA's lawyer about their punch list and that. So it's not like, that we're limited, though, legally, to what we can draw down. And this is talking about the public improvements. It's not short shrifting their legitimate concerns, but this is the legal aspect of what you have the power, and the highway department has the power. And Ray, you've worked with Terry Heitkamp at, our friends over at Trotter. So if you can give just a kind of an update of what the discussion's been on the warranty period and the...
Right.
Yeah, but Ray, before you start, so Ray is from the Campton Township Highway District.
I've worked directly under the commissioner. I'm the highway district foreman.
Yes, and we're...
And very much involved.
And we're under a contract agreement with the Campton Township Highway District. So it's not the village of Campton Hills, it's Campton Township.
Right.
So...
What we do, in curb and gutter subdivisions, we're responsible from curb to curb. Other than street name signs, we also take care of those. We do not take care of streetlights, just to make that clear. The HOA is supposed to be responsible for the sidewalks, the parkways. I don't know if they handle the streetlights or the village, I'm not sure of that, I can't tell you that. But what I've done with Shodine and Hank Harrison, Hank Harrison's very ill, he's in hospice at this present time. His attorney, I think, is taking care of what needs to be taken care of as far as getting things settled for the takeover. Shodine has worked with us, and the punch list we had for curbs that were damaged, for streets that needed cracks repaired or pavement, hot mixed pavement repairs, those have been done. The only thing that actually they have left to do, which they give both Shodine and the Geneva Construction gave me, were promises by June first, they would have several small concrete patches done on the curbs and gutters that had, you know, had small blemishes or whatever. Instead of making them tear the whole curb out and put new curbs in, we agreed to let them do their epoxy repairs, which are just as good. They take care of the problem, they're just minor. And we insisted on that before we would take it over, the subdivision over. And the warranty, that some of the letter of credit, I believe is what you're talking about, right?
Yeah.
That is, for one year, they wanted us to reduce it, we refused to reduce it, and protecting the people of Norton Lake, they will keep that in effect at the current level for the warranty period of one year, from the time we take it over, to make sure that if we find anything else that needs to be addressed, they'll take care of it. One thing that just came up, there was a sign stolen and missing, and we are, we would replace that if it happened under our watch. But since it was still under the watch of the builder, they are paying for it and am replacing it. So Louisa May Alcott signed right at the intersection of Whitman and Louisa May Alcott, and Norton Drive, I think it is, or Norton Boulevard. What else? Am I missing something, Mark?
No, I mean... And the, and the stormwater pipes that are in, under the, between the curb and the curb are covered as well.
Right.
We might have to televise that before, in the warranty period, to make sure that we don't have any issues with it. And they'll pay for that cost out of the letter of credit.
Right. So they've been very, Geneva Construction and Shodine have been very agreeable, and all the, our demands are met as far as takeover. I think it's been set...
Well, it's gonna be set for, if the board pushes it forward to the next meeting, it'd be April first would start the warranty period and the turnover. But I didn't wanna saddle midstream change from the HOA, or from the Shodine-Hank snow plowing to the highway commissioner. So we set one April. If we get a late snowstorm, I guess Ray'll take care of it if we have it, but...
Yeah, so if there are any residents here, besides the gentleman spoke earlier, we will be taking over the plowing, the salting of the roads, and we'll get it done properly, and you won't have to worry anymore about a private party coming in at the last minute to do whatever needs to be done in there, so.
Thanks, Andy.
Okay?
Okay.
Good enough.
Thank you, Ray.
You bet.
All right, anything else? Go ahead, Mike.
So for, for the reassurance of the folks, would council, please describe the difference between what surety we have held, for what purpose it's held, and for the limits of its legal use?
Sure, the village currently holds a letter of credit for the public improvements. So as, as Mr. Weber explained, that's curb to curb. When a subdivision of this size or sort is created, and the village agrees to approve it prior to it being constructed, the village requires the builder or the developer to put that in place. That way, if, if there are any deficiencies in the construction of those improvements, during the time that the development is still being built, the village can make a demand on that letter of credit through a lender, that the developer, you know, places that in, to perform improvements to the deficiencies if the developer fails to do them. That, as far as I'm aware, has not happened yet, but it's, it is sometimes atypical that that letter of credit stays at its full level during a warranty period after the municipality has taken over the public improvements and has the responsibility to maintain them. It's not unheard of, but, but the village was adamant, because of some of the current deficiencies that have been repaired or are being repaired, that they wanted that letter of credit to remain in place. So after, if the board does approve this turnover at the next meeting, to be effective April first, if during that year there is deficiency, it's not on the village's dime to make those repairs. It would go through the warranty to the developer to make those repairs. If they refuse, or if they default, the village can then tap into that letter of credit to pay for the repairs after the village actually makes them.
And...
And they also...
Right.
And, yes, that's probably the biggest thing. The, the responsibilities of the developer with regard to what the village is, is taking over is only on the public improvements. So as was stated, from curb to curb, everything in between, including the streets and the curbs, not sidewalks, not parkways, nothing in the common areas of the HOA, that would not be considered village property. So we can't, when I say we, the village can't use any of that letter of credit for any repairs or construction to the private improvements, even if they are owned or maintained by, at the HOA, or the developer before they're turned over to an HOA. So we understand that there has been a request to hold the village's letter of credit at its current amount. That was already in place, even before we were reached out to by the HOA's council, so.
Yeah, and the dollar amount, it was one point three hundred and fifty-six thousand eight forty-two and thirty-three cents back at the beginning. And after a series of reductions, the balance now is three hundred and forty-eight thousand thirty-nine dollars and forty-eight cents. That we will be holding for this warranty period to repair anything that is at fault. But based on the engineer and public works for us, is the township, Ray and Sam Galucci. We don't think there's anything they're not up to snuff on, but we still will hold this for the twelve months, starting April first, is the recommendation.
Sure. And the prior reductions in the amount of letter of credit is fairly standard, either in a development agreement or PUD. It's either spelled out in advance, or there are abilities by the developer to make requests to reduce the letter of credit as phases of the construction are completed. They have to prove to the village and its engineer, in this case, the highway department as well, that they have done certain things, met certain benchmarks, and then the village will approve reductions in that letter of credit, which they have done over the last several years.
The, so...
Trustee Mallett?
There. So the, how far can we push before we get sued? I mean, I'll just ask it that way. What, what, what techniques could we do, are we missing, where we wouldn't put, you know, the whole village at risk of us having to pay out in a lawsuit?
Well, I think we could discuss with the HOA Institute and the backup of setting up an SSA in lieu of the HOA. There'd be some discussion that if the HOA fails and isn't able to complete some of their mission, the village does have it in the development agreement to establish a backup special service area that would, in a way, be, instead of the HOA asking for dues to be paid and having members pay it or not pay it, the backup SSA establishes a legal way to impose it on all the houses in that subdivision as a backup plan. And we'd have to work, there'd be legal costs for us to set that up. But if the HOA was unable to do it, and they threw in the towel, they could work, KSA, your law firm, would approach us with that idea.
Right. And there is one currently in place. I believe there's a backup SSA for a lot of stormwater. I'm looking at an oil maintenance repair, restoration of bike paths, payment of real estate taxes on the common areas, things of that sort. So the village in approving the PUD anticipated that they wanted to have this in place, which is, it's very standard. Just, you know, not to say that the HOA would not do the work, but of a development of that size, it's, it benefits both the village and the members of the HOA, or the residents.
Yeah, the reason the villages do this across the country is because HOAs are something that's considered by the developer to turn over, but not every HOA stays in existence. And we don't wanna leave those new residents with no mechanism to make those necessary improvements to what they would consider their public improvements that's for their subdivision. So...
Trustee Burson, I think, oh...
It might be that Trustee Mallett and I are gonna talk about the same thing, I'm not sure. But I wanna make sure that we're distinguishing between public and private responsibilities. The, the issues related to the curb to curb responsibility that the highway department has is public responsibility. And, and so I don't know, I don't think any of us know the details of what's going on in Norton Lakes vis-à-vis Shodine and the residents, and so I don't wanna comment about that. But I, but I do think it's important for our residents to understand that the village's remedies are limited, and I'm hoping maybe trustee, excuse me, trustee Mallett could speak to it, or our attorney can speak to it, as to how, as to where our limits are, when, we can deal with things like roads, this is a public responsibility. Open space, which was mentioned earlier, parkways, paths, things like that, in the HOA scenario are not considered public responsibilities in the same way as the roads are. Is that correct?
That's right.
Correct. I mean, they'd be treated as the same as they would through any private property owner. So if they're, they are the responsibility of the developer prior to a turnover, private turnover, then the village would treat, treat them just like they would if somebody was not performing repairs to their own private home. Once there is a turnover, then the responsibility does lie on the HOA.
So if all six members of the board were like, hey, we get you, we wanna help you, I mean, there's, there are limits to what we can do. Is that right?
Sure. Unless there's a violation of the, you know, if they're found not to be in compliance with the PUD, then, you know, that could be something that the village could, could, could refer to. But it, and at least from the public improvement side, they have been through some discussions with the developer, working on the final punch list items. But the village does, does have all of the private area punch list items.
And some, and some of this conversation goes to the inability of the village to take the money, the letter of credit, that is set aside against the public improvements, and try and hold back against allegations that there are event failures... and try and hold back against allegations that there have been failures on, on the other improvements.
Sure. I mean, certainly the village can't use the money with, for anything that's not related to the public improvements. Withholding the money because there are other issues with the project or potentially other issues with the project not related to the reasons why the money is being held could be seen to be improper.
Go ahead, trustee Mallette.
All right, let me try a different tack here. Based on what Omar says and President mentioned, there seems to be some deficiencies in the stormwater management basin that they will be responsible for in the future before we as the Stormwater Authority, by virtue of King County allowing us to be. Can we leverage, I'll use that word, can we leverage the acceptance of the subdivision as a whole? Because accepting the public improvements is one thing, so there's an exception is also kind of part of that. Can we leverage that to get action out of Shodine or the estate? Oh, almost said that too soon. Hank's, uh, yeah, LALC, thank you. Or a, or some way to look at the relationship of the performance or lack thereof of the stormwater basins as it relates to needing effective, healthy stormwater basins to drain the roads properly that we are about to accept. Can we make a play on that somehow?
Sure. I mean, I would certainly recommend that if, if those are acceptances that the village is being asked to make, that, that they be inspected and, and, and I can't say guaranteed to function as they're, as they're expected to, but that there's a, at least a reasonable expectation that they are going to work properly.
And notwithstanding, the, the HOA is going to own the maintenance and monitoring. They should have that turned over if they don't already from the developer. They should have, and maybe this is something they're having trouble getting, they should have the report that at time of transfer, the condition of all of the stormwater ponds with their speech, you know, there's a, there's a health, there's a rating on how far along they should be. At actually eight years, they should be fully developed at this point, but if they're not, then they're already deficient. So that would trigger another three-year maintenance and monitoring plan or potentially five-year maintenance and monitoring plan, which is something we would decide on ourselves or, or end with consultation to Jody at King County. So if, if the, if, if the ti, I don't, I guess, Madam President and the rest of the world, I would say I don't like the timing on this then, and I think I would not vote for this next meeting at this point till we have some of these questions addressed more. So for, for, if nothing else, we can push this off. One more meeting to have some time for staff and, and with the HOA and/or with, with village engineer to maybe delve into this a little bit more deeply to give us an, an answer to, to at least we can, if, if we get to the point where we have to quote unquote, "accept the public improvements" because there's nothing wrong with them, at some point we have to accept them because otherwise they would sue us to accept them or the court would order them accepted. That used to be a thing in the seventies, more so than. But at least we can, we can at least comfortably think we can comfortably say we've exhausted every possible tactic that we have as a, as a public body.
And I, I think that's contemplated of if the HOA falls down or fails to get the funding to fix that type of improvement, the pipe from the road to the pond or something related to the pond, because the village is established by the county in the stormwater management, we have a backup SSA possibility that would impose basically a tax on every property owner to pay for the maintenance of those pipes and the ponds that receive the stormwater.
Well, that, I mean, that's the worst, not the worst. That, that is not a great outcome. Because then the, the folks that honestly bought property and they're expecting not to have that and, and are willing to take care of it and say, I don't need a backup SSA because my HOA is working, but for lack of not having enough seed money given to them and/or not having the development, the condition they thought it would be, right? But to lessen the, potentially, well, the, the, the one thing we can do is we have better bounding power than a, a small HOA could have. So if, if nothing else, if nothing else, we could get a better rate on the loan and it would be guaranteed because that's why, that's why we get good rate on the loan. They will know that it's backed up by the taxes for 10 years on the SSA. So we, that's, that was Nancy Lane. I mean, that's when we talked way back onto the folks on Nancy Lane. That was kind of the, do you guys all want to go in and try to get a homeowner's, you know, get a second mortgage on your house to try to fix all that stuff? Or, you know, the village, we can make and levy and we can do all that stuff and you'll get a better rate, you know? Is it saving you tens of thousands of dollars? Depends on your house, but at least it's saving you something. It's not nothing.
Anybody else?
So between now and the next meeting for, we'll discuss it again on discussion and we'll have further discussions with our village engineer and trotter engineering on that stormwater specifically.
Trustee Williams, do you?
That's all.
That's all?
That's what I was going to say.
Okay.
Let's wait.
All right. Okay, good discussion. We'll move on to the renewal agreement for the right-of-way access with MCI Metro Access Transmission Services Corporation. And Carmen, you'll fill us in on that one.
Yes, the village was recently sent a draft renewal agreement for this right-of-way access agreement. It's coming to a lot of different communities, not just White Out West, but, but other types of providers. It's, it's more of an expanded service in the, in the area. The draft agreements that are typically sent out are pretty one-sided towards the provider and not to the, to the community. So we've, we've worked on a few of them. I'm working on some draft responses or amendments to the agreement that was sent over that I will work with Administrator Rooney on soon and hopefully have something agreed to between the parties, at least conceptually, maybe for the next meeting if not in April. So we, we like to include things such as guarantees of certain restoration to public areas and rights of way and, you know, also fees paid to the village. Usually these draft agreements don't have any fees included at all, and usually they want 30-year terms. We usually like to keep them a little shorter so they can be renegotiated. So we've had some success with that in other, other areas.
All right. Trustee Burson, go ahead.
Attorney Forte, do you know approximately what percentage of the village is covered by White Open West or where the, that area is?
I, I don't remember off the top of my head. I don't think it's very large. I've seen the, I've seen the map of their exhibit to the draft agreement that has just a picture of their lines and it, it's very small. It's actually right just around this area by downtown, two Village Hall and a couple other of the buildings.
What, what's your experience been with other municipalities in trying to encourage a provider like that to expand their footprint along with any other, you know, expectations we might have?
Sure. We've, I personally have not, you know, worked on that type of, you know, taken that angle, but I've definitely spoken to some of the other attorneys in our firm who have, in some of the larger communities or more, let's say, have larger commercial areas, larger developed areas that have definitely seen that. And they've also negotiated transmission lines into the public buildings, whether they be Village Hall, Public Works, Police Departments,
Next question.
School districts, things like that.
May I ask a question of Chair Muir from the Technology Committee?
Uh, sure. For Kim, sure.
I just wondered if you knew whether White Open West is available at this address?
It, I don't know for sure. It probably is, but that's not what we have.
We have Comcast.
We have Comcast.
So from a diversity standpoint, you believe we would be able to get White Open West today?
Probably. It'd be better if we got MetroNet, but.
Right, but, but, but in terms of another land-based provider?
Sure.
It would be an option?
I think so. Um, you know, there's no point in, you know, you should never put off, put off being able to pit them against one another for best rates.
Or obtain diversity, right? So if one goes down, the other one isn't.
Sure.
Right?
But we just put in an LTE circuit, so, and that's been tested, so. That's a little bit of a tech, a tech committee update.
Okay, great, thank you.
The, I'm looking at the exhibit now. The, the, the line, service line appears to come down Old Burlington from the east and then crosses over 64 right to Village Hall. It's very short, yeah.
So, you know, the commercial area downtown.
Okay, thanks.
Just a side note, Kim is chairman of our Technology Committee, so she's very knowledgeable as far as this goes. So any other discussion?
I think under this, long as we brought it up, MetroNet is working in the area and we're going to have some issues in the building department to follow up on restoration. They're, they're not great at that, but they never have been, but now they at least have the excuse, it's winter time, so we don't do restoration until we're completed, but they're on our radar to follow up on restoration so that the public is wondering. You said MetroNet in a good way. Well, there's, the bad side is they don't do restoration without staff follow-up.
Okay, we'll move on. Okay, eight additional items from the president, trustees, or attorney. I would just like to say that Canton Township has a referendum on the April 1st ballot to buy more open space. I like to call it open lands. Open lands are very unique to our area for all the newcomers that are here. We have Corin Farm, Gray Willow Farms, they're all open to the public, Headwaters on Beeth Road. So I'm not endorsing it, but I do want to encourage you to look at the website. I'm a believer in nature and open space, but please check out their website and it will be on the April 1st ballot. Okay, anybody else?
I just have one that I'm sure the attorney will jump in and tell us the 15-day rule, but the soon coming has finally come with Burlington's boundary agreement. It hasn't changed markedly, but Carmen finally had their attorney approve some of the minor edits that he gave, so we'll be asking the board's consent, if I can put it on the agenda for a public hearing between the two bodies to approve a boundary agreement. And Carmen?
Do you want to kind of describe?
Sure.
The boundary agreement?
Sure, let me pull it up. The, give me a second here. So there's a proposed boundary agreement between the Village of Burlington and Campden Hills. It right now kind of starts in the middle of, let's see, where is this? South, south of McDonald Road.
Yeah, it's on the west, on Thompson Road.
Oh, Thompson Road, right.
Thompson Road, and then goes north to Plato.
Thomas Road all the way up to Elathorpe and then on Angle up Burlington to Plato, and then it goes all the way across 47 to Kendall along Plato Road. So that was the proposed boundary between the two municipalities. And a boundary agreement, just for the public that's here, is a, it's, hate to say a line in the sand, but it's, it is a line, be typically equidistant between two communities in which they agree what they would or would not like to see between the two communities. The Village of Campden Hills would agree in the boundary agreement not to go towards the northwest, towards Burlington as far as annexing in any land if that were to ever happen in the future. Burlington, the same southeast towards Campden Hills. The, the boundary agreement is going to serve as essentially an understanding that the two communities would like those areas to remain as they are now, to remain as a very, very large majority agricultural land farms. So the boundary agreement will, will lay that out, include this, this exhibit, which is the map. There's a 15-day publication and notice period prior to it being approved, so it wouldn't be on the next board agenda, but if we can match the timing upright, it would be approved in April.
Okay. Any questions or discussion?
And just so the public knows, this doesn't mean it's in the village already. This is a lot of area that is not annexed into the village. It's just Burlington agreeing with us that we will respect this line and not go west or northwest of said line, and they won't go inside that box to accept farms being converted for any purpose into their village as well. That doesn't mean that we won't still need some agreements with, say, Lily Lake in that same area. That, it's not a guarantee that we would eventually, over years, annex all that property. There's no guarantee of it. It's just an agreement with Burlington, which helps us with Elgin because they have an agreement with Elgin on some of this as well. So we, we know Elgin won't be coming down 47 from the north into that area.
And there are joint responsibilities in the agreement for areas at or near in the planning area, which is that area between the two communities, for zoning review responsibilities. So if Burlington has a zoning application for something on their side of the line that is within a certain distance of the line, then the village has the, the ability to appear, receive notice of the zoning applications, and then obviously would act as an interested party if a large development, whatever it might be, happens on the other side of the line. Right now, we, we wouldn't because the village is, the borders don't extend anywhere near where they're, where this line is at.
Mike, did you want to say? I thought.
I have some effort.
Okay, go ahead, trustee Burson.
Two things. Relative to the boundary agreement, if what we're, if what we're talking about is that the space in between Campden Hills and Burlington today that is currently unincorporated, that we're agreeing that it would remain unincorporated, I think that would be amazing and awesome if it was just the two of us, but it's not. And so obviously we're going to have more discussion about this when it become, when the actual agreement comes in front of us. But blocking Elgin, for example, from the north is great, but if they can swoop in from the east and we've agreed to keep it unincorporated, I'm, you know, I'm not sure that we have satisfied our objective.
It's not really unincorporated, meaning that the agreement and the direction would be to keep it in ag use or the current use to not intensify said use.
Yes, but.
And we'll have a bigger discussion when it's on the agenda.
Yes, of course. So then, the other thing I wanted to refer back to was the open space comment. And I think my own perspective on this is that obviously every, every need, every budget is important. Everyone in the Village Hall needs to get paid. Our police department, which is the best you're going to find anywhere, needs to get paid. We have road needs that are, I think, extreme would be, may be understating it, but when it comes to open space, if we don't buy it, it goes away. And so at the end of the day, the only real option we have, if we want to keep the look and feel of this community, is to buy that space. Because if we don't buy that space, private developers buy that space and they turn it into subdivisions. That's just the way it goes. And so if that, if you're okay with that, then we don't need to buy the space. But if you came out here because you like the open space, you like the, the look and feel and all of that, then, you know, people need to understand that one of the reasons that, that you're, that you're here, one of the reasons you enjoy that is because the community already invested millions of dollars in open space. And so there's more open space that needs to be purchased, plus there are bonds that need to be paid for. And so it's a rolling train and either you're on it or you're not. And so I think if you're about the open space here, that's the way I personally look at it.
Okay, trustee Mallette, none more. John, we'll move on.
Okay. I would say to the point of boundary agreements, long time coming. Something we'd talked in roundabout terms when we first incorporated. We were actually instructed by the then-county board chairman to talk to our neighbors as if we were going to be
I will.
A village and kind of give them an idea where we thought our lines would be. To Administrator Rooney's point and example, this is a statement of purpose, this is a statement of commitment. And if, if anybody wants to see an example of where there should have been one, take a look at the border between Schaumburg and Hoffman Estates. And you can be in Hoffman Estates and be north or south of Schaumburg, depending on where you are, because that was a free-for-all and they didn't have a boundary. where you are, because that was a free-for-all, and they didn't have a boundary agreement, and whichever developer got the better deal from whichever town at the time, they got it. So, this, developers don't like these things because they know that, they're, you know, mom told you no, dad's going to tell you no. Now, that's not to say that you can't have legal changes in the future, that, that could still happen, but, I mean, I like the, I like the idea that we're kind of, I think it's more than a line in the sand, because sand, kind of that, that phrase always is kind of, yeah, it's kind of loose and shifty. This is, you know, it's not in granite either, but it is definitely a demarcation that, that we can agree on, because it's a road, or it's a township line, or whatever it may be.
It's like a good fence, makes good neighbors.
Okay. We moving on, everybody? All right. I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session. Motion that the village board enter closed session, as permitted by the Open Meetings Act, to discuss one or more of the following matters: appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees or contractors, and pending, probable, or imminent litigation. And just FYI, we're going to go into closed session, and there'll be virtually no action after, so you really don't need to stay to hear of any action afterwards. So, but we appreciate your being here this evening. Motion to pull that?
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Second.
Yes, I'm sorry. Okay.
Second.
I'll take it.
Mallett, okay, roll call.
Trustee, um, Williams?
Yes.
Mallett?
Aye.
Botner?
Aye.
And Burson?
Aye.
Okay. I'm going to pull this item. Okay. Before we go into closed session, I'm going to pull action item to closed session. Motion to approve resolution R-25-11 authorizing a settlement and general release agreement.
That's being pulled.
That we're pulling that, yeah. Nobody's listening, anyway.
Okay, thank you. Kim heard it.
We move, because the camera's always on.
Oh, that's, that's, no, we're moving to the, slightly more skip.
I trust that the police won't like to watch the camera of what I'm doing.
But they go.
Are we going in the cameras?
Yeah, so let's just remove option and. Yes, well, it's more secure than. Because it's, it's kind of on auto.